We'd like to call the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to order. Tonight will be led in prayer by Commissioner Schaefer, and then we'll have a young man, who is a senior at Riverdale, almost ready to get his Eagle Scout, Mr. Cody Barrett, who is working on his citizenship badge from Troop 456 at North Boulevard Church of Christ. He will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Thank you, Lord, for the gift of another day. We know that your grace has sustained us at every moment, whether we were aware of it or not. As we look back over all that we have experienced today, may your spirit show us where we acted according to your will and where we failed to do so. And let us pray for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and we just ask you, dear Lord, to keep them safe from harm. And we also pray for all those responsible for making the decisions that affect our lives. May they be guided by God's wisdom and not the wisdom of the world. We also pray for Shirley Jones and her family under the death of her mother, and we also pray for the continued healing of Commissioner Turner's daughter, Kinsley. In your mercy, Lord, thank you for answering all our prayers and healing our faults and strengthen us in virtue for all our tomorrows. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
Present.
Commissioner Young.
Present.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serenio.
Yes.
Twenty-one present.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Do I hear a motion considering its approval?
Mr. Chairman, I move that they be approved as mailed.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Jernigan, did anyone have any additions or corrections? There being none, all of you then in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, there is no one requesting to make a public comment tonight, so we'll go right into our elections and confirmations, and we'll call on Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. We need to elect the notaries. There's a list in front of you, and I move that they be approved.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
We need to announce an alternate vacancy on the border zoning appeals, three vacancies on the Lineball Library Board, and a vacancy on the Highland Rim Regional Library Board. And we need to approve a judicial commissioner. Her name is Brandy Dover, and I move for her approval.
And second from Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. And did you have any other announcements, Mr. Phillips? Okay, thank you. There is no unfinished business, and we will start on the reports by standing committees. There is a purchasing committee monthly report. Do we have a motion considering its approval?
Aye.
Ms. Cook, and a second from Commissioner Black, did anyone have any discussion? All in favor of that, then please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, then. We're moving right along. We're ready for Commissioner Ely to start her report on the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. And we have a good bit of time before 6:30, Ms. Ely, so you can just go as far as we
Item J-2A, General Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. From General Sessions Court, from unassigned fund balance, $64,500, to evaluation and testing, $64,500. You will remember that two years ago, the legislature approved legislation that provided if a judge ordered evaluation and treatment of persons charged with misdemeanors, that the state would no longer provide those services, and the county would be responsible for those expenses. And you will remember also that last month, the county commission approved a resolution to extend our contract with the Tennessee Department of Mental Health, and this budget amendment reflects current charges. From library books, $1,000, maintenance and repair of equipment, $200, communications, $1,000, unassigned fund balance, $850, to travel, $3,050. From juvenile detention, miscellaneous gasoline, $300, to juvenile detention gasoline, $300. Other public health and welfare, from unassigned fund balance, $75,000, to other contracted services, $75,000. And this is to pay forensic medical for autopsy services. Unemployment compensation, from employee benefits and unemployment compensation, $46,998, unassigned fund balance, $65,573. And notice, it is broken out by departments. Planning Department, $6,050, OIT, $100, Sheriff's Department, $62,000, jail, $30,000, correctional work center, $3,000, juvenile detention, $4,300, pause, $7,000, and recreation, $121. Officials' salary adjustment, this is to comply with the minimum compensation due as required by TCA 8-24-102, and it reflects the updated census count back to April 1, 2010. From unassigned fund balance, $64,459, to county mayor, county official, $10,495, and the related benefits. Register of deeds, $8,260, and the related benefits. Property assessor, $8,260, and the related benefits. County clerk, $8,260, and the related benefits. Chancery court, $8,260, and related benefits. Sheriff, $9,994, and related benefits. From the Sheriff's Department and jail, increased revenue of sale of recycled materials, $150, increased expenditures to jail and maintenance and repair of buildings, $150. Increased revenue, contracted services, $500, increased expenditure in service training, $500. Increased revenue contribution, $1,297, increased expenditures for overtime pay, $1,080, and the related benefits. And from the Sheriff's Department, gasoline, $15,000. To jail, transportation, other than students, $15,000, and this is for prisoner transport. Transfers out, from JWC, restricted for public safety, $50,000, to transfer to other funds, $50,000. And this budget amendment is for the remediation of the exterior brick work for the adult detention center. Resolved this 14th day of April, 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner Serenio. Any questions or discussion? Give you just a moment. If there's no questions or discussion, then we're ready to vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Eighteen yes, three no. Motion passes.
Item J-2B, Ambulance Service Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows. Emergency medical service, increased revenue, patient charges, $7,000, increased expenditures, refunds, $7,000. From assigned for public health and welfare, $95,000, to gasoline, $80,000, utilities, $15,000. Resolved this 14th day of April, 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2C, a Highway Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the highway fund be amended as follows. And this reflects the new county census update, which increases the salary of the road superintendent. Capital Outlay Administration, from capital outlay, highway equipment, $12,284, to administration, county official administrative, $9,994, and the related benefits. Resolved this 14th day of April, 2011. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner P. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Seventeen yes, two no, two abstain. Motion passes.
Item J-2D, General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general purpose school fund be amended as follows. Early childhood education, increased revenue, early childhood education, $11,551, increased expenditures, medical insurance, $11,551. Capital Outlay transfers out, from capital outlay, other contracted services, $25,000. Capital Outlay, other capital outlay, $36,160, to transfer to other funds, $61,160. This is to fund the Excel Energy Change Order. Resolved this 14th day of April, 2011. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
And a second from Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2E, a Resolution Authorizing an Increase to the Stop-Loss Level on the Medical Plan, contingent upon Cigna processing large claim before June 30, 2011. Whereas the current stop-loss coverage on Rutherford County's medical plan is $380,000 per covered member. And whereas a study of the stop-loss coverage over the past four years has revealed there is little volatility in the claims experience, and that by increasing the stop-loss coverage, a significant savings in premiums could be achieved. And whereas Rutherford County, due to the size of enrollment, is large enough and has adequate reserves to be more aggressive with the stop-loss. And whereas it is being proposed that effective July 1, 2011, the stop-loss coverage on Rutherford County's medical plan be increased to $750,000 per covered member, to offset the premium cost and to achieve a greater savings in the stop-loss arrangement. And whereas there is one current claim that could potentially exceed the $750,000 stop-loss level. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the stop-loss coverage on Rutherford County's medical plan be increased to $750,000 per covered member, effective July 1, 2011, contingent upon the payment of a large claim by June 30, 2011. And if the large claim is not paid by June 30, 2011, the stop-loss level would remain at $380,000 per covered member for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2011. Resolved this 14th day of April, 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second was that Commissioner Schaefer. Questions? Commissioner Farley.
In the resolution, it talks about significant savings in the premium. Is that savings going to be passed on to the employee as well, or is the county going to be the only one saving?
It would be reflective in the rate.
Anything we can do-
For the employee as well.
And the county, I mean, both sides.
So the county and the employee are going to be saving money on their premiums?
Yes.
Okay. Do we know how much?
Um, yes.
It won't necessarily reflect a change in the rates, you know, just precisely because of this, but anytime we make any change and can reduce the cost of administering the plan, it would be reflective in what we have to do as far as rate increases might be required at some point in the future.
A part of the rate would go from $9.55 to like $5 per member, per month. So it is, as you said, hopefully it will be shown in the rate. I mean, it's not a huge increase, a decrease, slight.
But it is going to be a savings then, okay.
A savings.
Other questions? Okay, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2F, a Resolution Authorizing a Governor's Highway Safety Office Grant Application for the Sheriff's Department. Whereas Rutherford County has been made aware of available funds through the Governor's Highway Safety Office for a three-year police traffic services grant, dealing with multiple violations in traffic enforcement. And whereas the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department desires to submit an application in the amount of $99,949.24 for said grant, which will provide funding for equipment, overtime pay, and the related benefits for the enforcement effort. And whereas the grant, if approved, will provide 100% funding in the first year, 75% funding in the second year, and 50% funding in the third year. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to submit an application to the Governor's Highway Safety Office for a three-year police traffic services grant, in the amount of $99,949.24. Resolved this 14th day of April, 2011. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Farley. Any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2G, a Resolution Authorizing Agreement with the Tennessee Department of Health. This is our annual contract. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to execute an agreement with the Tennessee Department of Health, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for the provision of health services toward the support of the Rutherford County Health Department in the amount of $645,643, with $517,268 being direct local funds for which Rutherford County shall not be billed, and $128,375 in appropriations for which Rutherford County shall be billed for the period of July 1, 2010, through June 30, 2011. Resolved this 14th day of April, 2011. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jordan, second. Any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2H, a Resolution Requesting Unclaimed Balance of Accounts Remitted to the State Treasurer Under Uncclaimed Property Act. Whereas Tennessee Code Annotated Section 66-29-102 and Section 66-29-123, as amended by Public Chapter 401, Acts of 1985, provide that a municipality or county in Tennessee may request payment for the unclaimed balance of funds reported and remitted by or on behalf of the local government and its agencies if it exceeds $100, less a proportionate share of the cost of administering the program. And whereas Rutherford County, Tennessee, and/or its agencies have remitted unclaimed amounts to the state treasurer in accordance with the Uniform Disposition of Uncclaimed Property Act for the report year ending December 31, 2009. And whereas Rutherford County agrees to meet all of the requirements of Tennessee Code Annotated Section 66-29-101 at SEC, and to accept liability for future claims against accounts represented in funds paid to it, and to submit an annual report of claims received on these accounts to the state treasurer by September 1 each year. And whereas it is agreed that this local government will retain a sufficient amount to ensure prompt payment of allowed claims without deduction for administrative costs or service charge, and that the balance of funds will be deposited in this local government's general fund. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, request the state treasurer to pay the unclaimed balance of funds remitted through the 2009 report year to it in accordance with the provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated Section 66-29-121. And, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Okay, we have about three minutes before 6:30. There is no report from Health and Education Committee, and also no report from Property Management, no report from Public Safety, and we have one resolution from Public Works and Planning. Commissioner Jernigan.
Public Works and Planning Committee has a resolution approved drainage easements for Lot 6 and 11 of Home Park subdivision block and lots 36 and 37 of Arlington. Whereas pursuant to the Private Act authorizing the Rutherford County Highway Commission and Superintendent to work on public drainage easements and provide for the maintenance of public drainage easements requires the county legislative body establish an official list of recognized public drainage easements. The attached Exhibit 1 are the easements recommended by the planning department, and whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of public drainage easements as submitted by the planning department. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county commission approves the attached list of public drainage easements. Exhibit 1 is submitted by the planning department in accordance with Tennessee Code Annotated 54-903 and 54-904. These public drainage easements shall be the only public drainage easements which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department. Resolved this 14th day of April, 2011. I so move.
Second, Commissioner Black and others. Any discussion? All in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, Mr. Jernigan. Now we're ready to have the public hearing with respect to this request. The first request is a rezoning and conditional use permit request, 10-A017, on behalf of M. Lee Barrett, located at 8578 Lebanon Pike. Existing zoning is R15. The requested zoning is services, and the requested conditional use permit is for sale of used vehicles on a site of approximately 2.87 acres, and Mr. Demosie will more fully explain.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. The property in question has been used as a variety store and flea market since before the current resolution was adopted back in 1984. The variety store therefore was illegal, nonconforming use. An application for conditional use permit type 3 was granted in February 2004 for the variety store and also the storage of fencing materials. Since that time, the use of the property has changed, and the fencing contractor is no longer there. As a matter of fact, after this application was submitted, the variety store, flea market, vacated the property in January of this year, so right now there's nobody currently using the property. The applicant, however, would still like to pursue the conditional use permit for sale of used vehicles from the property. This would include motorcycles, RVs, any kind of vehicle such as that. Historically, though, the organization of the property has been a concern to staff. Really, the fact that they were selling the cars and RVs, motorcycles, what brought it to code's attention to begin with. But we do recommend there's in your agenda outline that we provided you, there is an area there designating the parking area as well as the area for display of the vehicles. This application has sort of been the victim of circumstances to a certain extent. The application was originally deferred at the December 13th Planning Commission meeting due to concerns about the overall design of the property, and the applicant wasn't able to be at the meeting. To address the concerns about circulation, the applicant did submit a plan for a new parking area, which again is included with your agenda materials. Then in January, when it was to be brought up again, of course, we had some weather events, and the whole meeting was canceled. In February, it turned out that it was requested for deferral again because we had alerted the applicant to the fact that his property was vacant, and he hadn't realized that at the time, so he kind of wanted a chance to kind of look at things again before he went forward. So finally, the Planning Commission did have a public hearing on this in March, and also now we are here before you. So there was quite a bit of discussion about this particular application, really regarding the design of the property, well as outside storage, landscaping, those kind of things. You'll see on the conditions that have been submitted as recommended conditions, all vehicles that they would be selling would have to be licensed and operational. Public Works, there was some question about this as to whether or not the cars would actually be licensed. After looking into that just a little bit, it turns out that whoever the dealer is, the actual used vehicles are licensed to the dealer himself. I believe Ms. Allen had mentioned that, and that does appear to be the case. No vehicle repair work shall take place on this site except for minor service work within the building. No vehicles shall be parked in the right of way of the road- No vehicles shall be parked in the right-of-way of the road. That's an issue as well. We didn't want to see any cars parked along the right-of-way of 231. Any used vehicles would be stored or displayed in the area as depicted on the map in the agenda materials, and then there'd be no outside storage of any goods for sale, except for the vehicles that were for sale. So with that, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this by unanimous vote, 9-4-0 against. I do believe that the representative of the applicant is present, yes he is, Mr. Blake Cawthron, and will be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions, Mr. Demossi, before we have the public hearing? Okay, then, thank you, Doug. Therefore, then, we will declare the public hearing for this conditional use permit request open, and if there's anyone here that would like to speak for or against this proposal, this is your opportunity to come forward and tell us what you'd like to about the project. Does anyone like to come forward? Please come forward and give us your name and address and make your statement. I don't see anyone that wishes to speak. That being the case, we're going to declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion concerning this request? Commissioner Black.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve this with the conditions set forth by the Planning Commission.
And a second, Commissioner Schaefer. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all of you in favor of this, then please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. And we'll continue with the zoning resolution amendment to Article 13.04. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Our last item we have tonight is a resolution amendment to our zoning resolution regarding standards for recreational vehicles. Our current regulations, as written, do not allow recreational vehicles to be used as living quarters. Now, while staff feels that that's an appropriate regulation, we also realize that there are situations where this type of situation might be desirable and should be allowed. Examples including a temporary living space to repair a home because of natural disasters, constructing a house, remodeling, something to that effect. Also, sometimes we run into situations where people own a large tract of property, or just a tract of property, and would like to live on the property while they're constructing their home. So sometimes they'll want to move in a small recreational vehicle to live there while the home is being built, and then either remove it or just store it on the property upon completion. Also, a strict interpretation of our current regulations would also not allow for visiting friends or relatives to stay in an RV during their visit. Now, that's not a call we get very often, but if you took the literal reading of our regulations, you could make that argument. So we looked at some possible amendments to our zoning in regards to those issues, and you'll find in your agenda packets some amendments to that effect. The first thing that we have done is our current regulation basically just says outdoor storage of no more than one boat and boat trailer, and no more than one camping trailer or RV per dwelling unit. We've opened that up just a little bit to state, you know, outdoor storage of no more than one watercraft and trailer for such watercraft, which would include boats, RVs, anything. I'm sorry, not RVs, but jet skis and those kind of things. Also, two all-terrain vehicles, like little four-wheelers and trailer for those. A lot of people just have utility trailers for various purposes. Nothing really in our current regulations addresses that, so we added that in there as well. And then also leaving in the one camping trailer or RV per dwelling unit. Then we've also, there was a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission about the size of the property. This really, our current regulations pretty much, it's one-size-fits-all, pretty much. So what we did after discussion at the Planning Commission were that properties greater than one acre in size would be allowed outdoor storage of more than one, either boat, watercraft, all-terrain vehicle, et cetera, provided that the only one could be seen from any adjacent property line. Now, there was a lot of discussion about how to enforce that, if it should be from other property lines or simply just the front property line, the right-of-way of the road. That seemed to be one of the controversial points of the discussion. Staff's preference for this is to treat this as we treat any zoning enforcement, which would be from any property line, although that wasn't the opinion of just everybody with the Planning Commission. We also, if you look at your regulations going on to actually the usage of recreational vehicles for living or housekeeping purposes, we put in there for bona fide temporary instances of visiting relatives or invited guests not to exceed 14 days in any calendar year per visit. And then we broke it down into the next two sections. In cases where a fire or a natural disaster have occurred, subject to the following restrictions, they could have a temporary permit for living there for six months, with an additional six-month temporary permit to be issued by the planning director or their designee. The unit would have to be served by water, sewer, and electric facilities. The unit would have to meet all building separation standards, and the residential use of the unit would have to be discontinued upon the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. The last part of this really, again, deals with those where the owner decides and desires to live on the property while their principal residence is being constructed. The regulations are pretty much identical here with the exception of Letter B, where a building permit for construction of the principal unit would have to be issued prior to us allowing the temporary use to be issued for a living unit, a temporary living unit, and the building permit would have to remain valid during that time. So with that, this was approved by the Planning Commission by a five-vote, five-to-three vote margin. Again, most of the discussion centered around the enforcement of how many boats, RVs, are on the property, and how that's, again, how that was enforced, either from the front property line or the surrounding, any property line. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I think you may have answered one of the questions. And I rise to ask questions, and I think you know why. I think we've had a situation on Kingwood Lane. So the timeframe that RV could be on a property would be six months, and then with a six-month extension.
That's correct.
If it's been going on in the past, is it, would they be in compliance if this is passed?
I mean, the situation you're referring to, I mean, that's quite a long history.
Five years.
Yeah, and I don't know if this necessarily just automatically means he's in compliance with everything. I know that there are things going on trying to remedy that situation.
I know that, the mayor and I have spoken. They're trying to get some remedies on that situation. What size RV can be on a lot, and what size lot?
Well, we don't actually differentiate between what size lot and what size RV. We didn't go into any of that as far as the size of the property. I mean, this would apply to any property.
So someone could bring in, like, one of these country music, I'm not saying a country music, but I'm talking about the size.
A big bus kind of thing.
A big bus can bring it into a subdivision and sit it up for six months.
The way this is currently written, yes, we don't have any size restrictions.
That's only if they're building the house, rebuilding the house or something. They only for 14 days out of the year if they're visiting, though.
If they're visiting, that's correct, yeah.
Putting the driveway for up to 14 days out of the calendar year for a family member or something, but they can only park it there for that six months, and the other six months if their principal structure is burnt down or a natural disaster is being rebuilt.
Correct, that is correct. Is that what you were kind of referring to? I'm sorry, okay, yes.
Commissioner Coggan.
I'm just curious, was there any discussion had with the growing trend of full-time RVing? It's kind of a growing trend in today's society, and I just didn't know if there was any discussion as to especially retired people who may decide to go to Florida for the summer but want to live in their RV on a piece of property, depending on acreage or whatever, full-time, and not have a primary residence?
I guess the quick answer to that question is no. We were really looking at this more on the temporary basis, especially dealing with those. Because we run into this situation on a fairly frequent basis at the planning office for people that want to set up an RV just for temporary purposes as described in here. You know, they're remodeling, the house has been damaged, or they just want to live there while they're building their house. We didn't really get into that other. I, you're correct, that is becoming more and more of a trend, but we were really limiting this to the temporary use at this point.
So I guess a follow-up question to that was, so right now, if I was to be of age to retire and wanted to live in an RV full-time, I couldn't do that and reside in Rutherford County?
Unless you followed the regulations. I mean, if you just lived in an RV and didn't have any place to store it, then, I mean, unless you were actually in like an RV park or a camping ground or something like that, that'd be about the only thing I could think of that would allow something like that at this time.
So there's been no discussion in allowing that?
Not at, not when we were looking at this particular set of amendments. Now, I will say that as we're going through our rewrite of our zoning resolution, that we've discussed campgrounds and those kind of things, about some possible regulations for those. Now, we don't have anything concrete yet, but that discussion has come up at that point.
Other questions or discussion? Mr. Allen.
I just wanted to make one comment, and help me remember this, Doug. I think it was Susan Allen who came and spoke when we had a public hearing on this, and she's a member of, I think she called it the Good Sam Club, which I guess is a national RVing club. And she'd actually passed our resolution along to some higher-ups in that organization, and they found it to be a very agreeable document.
That's correct, that is correct.
Any other comments or discussion? Commissioner Jernigan.
I'm like Adam. Question, I'm like him. You mean if I just say I own 100 acres out here, and I decide that I'm gonna be where it's warm about six months out of the year, and I bought a big RV, I can't park that RV on there the other six months if I won't come here and stay in it? Is that what you're telling me?
For not for living purposes. Now, there's a difference between the storage, and I mean, if it's being stored there or if you just wanted to live on the property. But the way our resolution is written today, you can't do that.
But why would you want to put that kind of money in if you're just gonna store it, if you ain't gonna use it?
Commissioner Jernigan, I understand what you're saying, but again, the regulations as even written today wouldn't allow that.
I mean, me personally, if I'd vote for this, I'm gonna have to be, look like me planning put into this right here, because you're gonna have more and more of this, like this, especially the way economy and everything else is.
Right, and again, when we were looking at this, we were really looking at this from the standpoint of the temporary use. I mean, we understood that there is the issue with the permanent occupancy using RVs, but that wasn't really what the intent of this was designed to handle. You know, we were really looking at it more from the temporary use, and understanding that that issue is out there, needs to be addressed. But again, maybe from a, looking at the new zoning resolution, which, you know, currently is.
So Planning Committee didn't even talk about this?
Not the long-term plan, not the long-term permanent use, no, sir, we didn't.
I mean, I'd rather see it back, send it back to planning and let them have some more discussion, me personally.
Commissioner Farley, let's ask questions, and you'll have time to discuss and debate a motion if you so choose later.
What brought this, what was the reason? I know you were getting complaints. Is there any particular reason that was brought up?
No, I don't think there was any particular reason. It was just the fact that we would be getting phone calls, and people referred up to planning for these type of situations. And, you know, Codes would refer people up to us saying you need to talk to planning to get you a permit. But when we look at our regulations, there's really nothing we can do for these temporary instances where people want to live on the property or where they want to live in an RV while they're fixing up their property or anything like that. So that's really what drove this. It wasn't any one specific instance. It was just the, over time, just something we realized that we had to deal with. So, and we didn't, we half wanted to wait until we dealt with this in our new resolution, but at the same time, we realized this is probably something that needed to be done before that. You know, this is something we felt we could get through a lot faster, and then just incorporate whatever changes we do here, if they're approved, to the new resolution. So that was really why.
So it would have helped out a few years back if, on the situation I've been dealing with, if we'd had something like this in place?
It would have given a little more, I mean, right now, he's just, I mean, right now, no one's allowed to do it, period. I mean, based, if you look at our current regulation, but, you know, under these new ordinances, at least we have some guidelines now to allow those kind of things, so.
Commissioner Phillips, excuse me, Commissioner.
Thank you, what? What was going through, at least this planning commissioner's mind, was the tornado that happened about two years ago, where a lot of homes were destroyed, and people needed a temporary place to live. If they had an RV, they would not be allowed to live in that under our current ordinance. They could rent one, live in that till their home is repaired or rebuilt. That, in my mind, was what we were talking about to cover a situation like this. Not someone to live in their RV full-time forever, or to live in their car, or truck, or bus, or something like that forever. So in my mind, this planning commissioner was looking at it, if we had a national disaster, we would not have a remedy, a temporary remedy for people we would not have a remedy, a temporary remedy for people who needed a temporary living quarters. And that's what was going, at least through my mind, when this was discussed.
Commissioner P.
Just out of curiosity, if I'm not mistaken, it's Smyrna, there's a campground there, and I'm pretty sure you've got some permanent residents that are living this way and have for years. How's that gonna affect that group?
Well, if it's in a campground, if it's in an approved campground, this really wouldn't have any effect on them. Now, I guess I'm not familiar with the one you're referring to, is actually in town limits of Smyrna, or, okay, okay. If it's actually in the town limits, obviously this wouldn't have any effect on it anyway, but if it's an existing approved use, it would just, this really is not for that type of situation.
Any other questions? Then if not, we will have the public hearing and see if we have any public comments. That being said, then, we're going to declare the public hearing for this zoning resolution amendment regarding the RV regulations to be open. Is anyone here from the public sector that would like to speak to this proposal? Okay, that being the case, no one wishes to speak from the public, we're going to declare the public hearing closed, and now we will take under consideration a motion concerning this zoning resolution amendment. Is there a motion?
Senator Rutter.
Who was that, sir?
Phillips.
Commissioner Phillips, excuse me. And do we have a second?
Young.
Commissioner Young. Now more discussion. Right, there not being any more discussion, you're ready to vote, and as interesting as this vote is, record the votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, record the votes then, please.
Fifteen yes, six no, motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're down to the Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee item on the agenda, and there's only one theme there, and there will be a brief executive session there regarding some difficulties experiencing in the real world of construction and development and bonds and letters of credit. So therefore, we're going to go into executive session, we'll be going off the air, and we will have to excuse everyone in the room, except for our commissioners, and our attorney, Mr. Cope, will not be able to stay with us because he has indicated a conflict of interest on one of these projects, so we'll have our attorney that we're using for this discovery, Mr. John Rucker, will be with us during that session. So therefore, we'll now close this part of our meeting, and we'll go into recess. About how long will this take us to go off the air? Mr. Robertson?
Just a couple of seconds.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're back in session. We've completed an executive session, and we'll let our attorney, Mr. Rucker, report briefly on that session.
The executive session that we just completed has been finished, and we discussed some of the issues involving some subdivisions and developments. There was no deliberations on the part of the commission, no decisions made. I simply answered questions regarding my report to the commission. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rucker. Is there any other business or any other announcements to come before the commission? Mr. P.
There is a Country Hand Breakfast at Ketchnell this weekend. That's Saturday, April the 16th, from 6:00 to 10:00, and I think we'll have about a three-month break after that, so y'all won't get to hear that every month for a little while, but if you enjoy the Country Hand like I do, or pancakes, please come out and visit with us, thanks.
It's a great meal, and they're doing a great service for our communities. Mr. Turner.
On the tail end of that, we're actually having a spaghetti dinner tomorrow night in Smyrna at the Senior Citizens Auxiliary Center.
Senior Citizens.
Senior Citizens Center, right next to the Smyrna Library from Forte. We'd love to, before you go out there for Ketchnell breakfast on Saturday, you might want to swing by the Smyrna one, too. We've got one from 6:00 to 10:00 at the Fire Hall downtown as well, so we'd love to see you there.
Excellent opportunities to support a good cause and enjoy a good meal. Anything else to come before this body? If not, the meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.